Do we want to go around and do an introduction with everyone first? I am, my name is Jeff, call sign KF zero CSJ. I took my tech and general middle of November. So I have, I've had my license for about three months now. And just wanting to get my amateur before the prices go up. The amateur extra before the prices go up, so. Daniel, you wanna introduce yourself next?
Well, my name is Daniel Victor Alpha Three Sierra Delta Oscar from Ontario, Canada. Our licenses are a little bit different, but I want to get my, here it's called advanced. So we have the same criteria as you guys and I'd love to, uh, to learn along with you. So thanks for having me here.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh, my name's Clint. I live in Southeast Iowa. Uh, I got my tech back in November. I'd been studying for quite a while and just hadn't found a place close to take the test. But, uh, I did get it in November and went back and got my general here a couple of weeks ago. So now I'm studying for the extra.
Sounds good. Uh, schizophrenic gaming.
Yeah, um, I've been studying to take my tech, you know, from Virginia named Jacob. But about it.
Sounds good. And I don't know how to pronounce that one. The, the ring?
Uh, you can just call me Cody. Uh,
Okay.
Basically studying to take all three in a single run if I think I can manage it.
That work, yeah, I tested all three. I just failed miserably on my extra when I took my test because it was, it's like, it's fifteen dollars for which, how many ever you actually take, so. So yeah. You can try and then we'll, and you pass the ones you pass. So, okay. So just, um, and TO.
Hello, everybody. I am Steve, call sign KM nine G. And, uh, I'm just really appreciative that Jeff decided to put this thing on today. And I'm gonna stick around for a little bit and then head out. But, uh, feel free to ask me any questions and I'll play along for as long as I can.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your server or for your Discord, uh, TO. And, uh, yeah, um, we appreciate, we'll appreciate any guidance and explanation that you want to contribute. So, um, we are, as, um, I mentioned this to before, but we're going through the hamstudy.org study mode. And then, uh, we'll probably just do like a round robin of, so everyone can get, can read off the questions and, um, sort of have an input in things. Everyone seeing the screen, okay?
Yeah.
So I'll take the first one. Um, what is the radiation pattern of two one quarter wave vertical antennas spaced one quarter wave apart and fed ninety degrees out of phase? I am gonna guess I'm omnidirectional. And that is wrong. So the explanation for this, the ninety in, in the ninety degree, the nine in the ninety degrees looks a bit, looks a bit like a drawing of a cordial shape. So that would be C, cordial.
So do you know what cardioid looks like?
Offhand, no.
I mean, anybody?
It looks like a figure eight. It's basically spinning out the front and the back, but not as much on the sides.
Yeah. So Bob Heil is the one that explained this to me, not that I'm bragging or anything, but, um, that really wasn't the point. I'm sorry about that. Um, he was talking about microphones. And the way I remember it is that on a cardioid pattern, you talk in the microphone and the microphone tries to reject all the signals coming from the backside. So this is a figure eight, but they were talking about a nine. So there's supposed to be not as much on the backside. Is that right, Jeff?
Um, okay, that, is it this one right here?
I think the other thing was that the nine looks fairly close to an eight, like a typical cardioid pattern. But I could be slightly off on that.
So he's got the cardioid pattern up on the screen there.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, this. So, okay. Dan, uh, do you wanna introduce you? The Dan Biersnack, you wanna introduce yourself and take the next question? Okay.
Uh, which Dan? There's two of them.
Yeah, Dan, Dan Biersnack was, is the next one on my list. So that's why I was gonna have him go. But he's not responding right now to voice. So, or he's on mute. So, um, Dan, you.
Hi, there I am.
There you go. Since you joined late, um, you did a short introduction. You wanna introduce yourself and then you take this next question?
Yeah, I'll hop in here real quick. I'm, uh, Dan Beer Snacks studying for extra. Um, we've got, uh, you guys might've seen me on TO and dude, their live stream the last two weeks, uh, helping them out with the, uh, live scoreboard. And, uh, Jeff, I did get a chance to look over your stuff and I want to talk to you more about that, uh, at another time. But, uh, that's it. That's where I'm at. So what is the deviation ratio? Uh, the ratio of the carrier center to the audio modulating frequency? The ratio of the audio modulator to. Pressure was D.
The ratio of the highest audio modulate, modu- modulating frequency to the average audio modulate, modulation frequency.
Yes. No.
Second guess to go to the explanation. Tip, it is.
Okay.
That is the only answer that has deviation in it. In FM modulation, there's two primary parameters of interest. Are the deviation ratio and the modulation index. Deviation ratio is the ratio of the maximum carrier frequency deviation to the highest audio modulate, modulating frequency.
All right.
Clint, would you like to take the next one?
Uh, wh- which of the following represents an inductive reactance in polar coordinates? I'm really not sure on this. Like I said, most, I'm not gonna have much of a clue on most of these. I just started studying a couple of days ago and haven't done a lot. So, um.
Yeah. So don't worry about that so much. One of the big test taking secrets here is that you get it wrong automatically. If you don't pick an answer at all, so pick one. Cause we can't get the info until we get a, a pick.
Um, I guess we'll go with B.
Phase angles are measured from zero to, oh, you wanna go?
Go ahead.
All right. Phase angles are measured from zero to one eighty for positive induct. And zero to one hundred and eighty degrees for negative capacitive. Oh, I thought that was the question for some reason.
No, that's, that's fine. So actives are positive and, uh, capacitive, so negative. So it is positive phase angle.
You still want me to go?
Go ahead. Yep.
All right. What is the characteristic of dip packaging used for integrated circuits? A, a total of two rows of connecting pins placed on opposite sides of the package, dual inline package, two chips in each package, dual in package, package amounts in a direct inverted position, low leakage, doubly insulated package. I think it's B. Yeah.
That one's gonna be A. It's basically those STM or similar chips that have chi- uh, rows of pins on both sides. Usually the same amount on both.
Yeah, like the Arduino.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, my COVID.
What is the failure mechanism when a junction diode fails due to excessive current? If I had to guess, um, insufficient forward voltage.
My guess is, my guess is it's, no, it's not. Oh.
I didn't even see that one. Wow.
Yeah.
Went right over it.
Yeah. When things, when there's excessive currents, they heat up.
Yeah.
Which.
Yeah.
I didn't even think of that either. TO, you wanna take one or you back to me?
Yeah, I'll take it. Which of these emissions modes is best for oral, auroral propagation? Not oral, auroral, RIDI FM, SSB or CW? And I would go with DCW.
Correct.
So let's do the info on that.
Sure.
Basically it's talking about bouncing off the ionosphere, right?
The Aurora borealis. As far as I know, which is in the ionosphere for sure. So I'm gonna read that rough tone is caused partly by the fact that the individual ionized particles, which make up the aurora are moving around at high speeds. And so a Doppler effect is produced, which can increase the bandwidth of the signal. Also, the auroral stream as a whole is flowing and turbulent, which produces further Doppler fluttering effects. The broadening of bandwidth plus the flutter effect precludes most forms of modulation except for CW. So they're trying to bounce signals off of the aurora, which is moving and turbulent. And so your voice is going to sound moving turbulent. Nobody would be able to understand it.
Yep. And because CW is so small, it can handle the, sort of picks off the individual particles. Would be my guess versus getting spread across more.
Yeah, we just got three questions in a row that I knew. I don't know all of them. I, my, uh, myself, I'm a, um, hands-on learner. So I, I passed the test by sheer force of will, not because I, you know, I'm a genius or anything.
At what time of year is sporadic E propagation most likely to occur? Um, and I'll, so sporadic E is the effect of VHF and UHF going a lot farther than it's supposed to, basically getting caught up in the atmosphere and going like hundreds of miles. Um, I believe, and that is a question that's, is what sporadic E is a question is on the tech and your general. Um, so for the ones that haven't gotten that yet, that's the, I'll explain that and. I am gonna say C. And I am wrong.
I'm guessing A because of summer being, you know, more likely to have the sun closer to you. So you're gonna have more issues. Um, but that's again purely a guess on that.
You were right. Sporadic E displays seasonal patterns. Sporadic E active, activity peaks predictably in the summertime. In North America, the peak is most noticeably mid to late June, near the summer solstice. Silly hint. When the kids are off from school in summer, their schedule tends to be more sporadic.
That's a good hint. I like that hint.
Yeah.
Dan, do you wanna take the next one?
Hang on, I'm getting yelled at by a toddler here. Hold on.
Okay, Clint, how about you take it and we'll come back.
I, I got it. Hold on, he just ran away. Which of the following is a technique providing a highly accurate, stable oscillator needed for microwave transmission reception? Uh, all of the above.
Yeah, that's what I'm leaning towards.
And I had this question when I was playing around with this earlier and I got it wrong. And that's how I know it's actually all of the above. Yes, the, all, all of these GPS, uh, stable reference oscillator and, uh, temperature controlled, high Q resonator.
What is the radiation pattern of two quarter wavelength vertical antennas spaced a quarter wavelength? Oh, that's the one we already did.
We are getting repeats. That's a new one. How about you take this one?
How is the Q of an RLC series resonant circuit calculated?
Reactance of the inductance multiplied by the reactance of the capacitance. Reductance of either the inductance or the capacitance multiplied by the resistance. Resistance divided by the reactance of either the inductance or capacitance or reactance of either the inductance or capacitance divided by the resistance.
I get B.
Fundamentally, regardless of series or parallel configuration, Q factor is defined as the ratio of the reactance, reactance power. PX over the capacitance resistance power. So reactive over resistance.
Man, just out of curiosity, does anyone have a good means of memorizing some of these formulas?
Um, this one I'm not, I don't know enough. This one is above my level of, uh, knowledge.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah.
So the answer is the reactance either of inductance divided by resistance.
Hey, Bob, check the amps.
Next one. And this one we already did as well. This one we haven't seen.
Want me to read it?
Sure.
How can an APRS station be used to help support a public service communications activity? A, all these choices are correct. B, an APRS station with an emergency medical technician can automatically transmit medical data to the nearest hospital. C, APRS stations with general personnel scanners can automatically relay the participant numbers and time as they pass the checkpoints. And D, an APRS station with a GPS unit can automatically transmit information to show a mobile station's position during an event. I'm thinking A is wrong because the way they write B, stating that they can transmit medical data, that would probably violate HIPAA regs because you can't encrypt it. Um, so that kinda throws me for a loop. I'm guessing it's gonna be D.
Yeah.
Correct. Yep. And yeah, um, they have a very, if you look at the explanation, they have a very narrow definition of AR, APRS that it is pretty much used basically only for positioning.
Okay. So they don't include like the text messaging or CQing of it or any of that kind of stuff? Basically in their general definition in the exams?
That, according to this, this explanation, yes. They, they're just talking about, oh, it's, they can do positioning. So yeah, that's where it's like, yeah, you could do this packet. C of sending packets is very well possible, but they don't really focus on that. So that's, um,
Cool.
Just how they look at it, I guess. And we had this one too. Here's a new one. The smoking ape, do you want to introduce yourself and take this next question?
Well, you're kinda putting me on the spot, but that's fine. Um, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yep, loud and clear.
All right. I just figured I'd check in and see how you guys are doing. It looks pretty cool. Um, says, which of the following describes an extended double ZEP antenna? A wideband vertical antenna constructed for precisely tapered aluminum tubing. I know that's not right. A portable antenna erected using two push, uh, support poles? Nope. I know that's not right. An N-fed folded dipole antenna? That might be right. A center-fed one point two five, uh, meter, I guess wavelength, uh, antenna with a five eighths wavelength elements of phase. I'm gonna say, I know that's not right. So I'm gonna go with C.
That's it, ape. I'm unfollowing you on YouTube. Just kidding.
Well, I don't blame you. I, I'm gonna follow myself.
So remember this is for tests above his pay grade, folks.
Right.
The ZEP is short for zeppelin. I hope I pronounced that right. Is resonant, resonant antenna infed by ladder line. A double ZEP is a center-fed one wavelength antenna. A double extend, extended ZEP is a dipole type antenna consisting of two linear, linear, co-linear oh point six four wavelength elements fed in phase. The extension being the extra one and a quarter wavelength added by the ZEP on each side. This double extended version provides three dB gain over a dipole on the band, on the band it is designed for, and each side or leg is about five eighths wavelength long.
I'm gonna file a trick question exemption.
Yeah. So for this one here, guys, the normal dipole is a quarter wavelength on each side. And so this one is extended by making it one point two five wavelengths. So two five eighths on each side. So it's just a dipole that's a little longer and that's where the extended part comes in. So five eighths is longer than a quarter. There's your extension.
Well, when they say that they're in phase, they're, those are two, instead of being a dipole, they're, they're next to each other there, right? Like, don't they use like that?
It's just a dipole. It looks.
Yeah.
I am.
And that's where I don't know a lot about phasing, but I believe, like, there was another question about talking about, um, ninety, ninety degrees out of phase. And I don't know exactly how to, but I believe just a standard dipole is in, is in phase with it itself.
I'm gonna send a picture of one to the ham radio chat.
Cool.
Assuming that this site calculator is correct.
Yeah, that's what mine looks like. Alright fellas, I gotta run. The wife is out and it's time to spend some time with the wife before I get yelled at.
Always a good thing to do.
Yep, we'll see ya.
Thank you. Sounds good. Have a good evening. What is a failure mechanism? And we've had this already. And we've had that one already. And we've had this one already.
I wonder if it just repeats any of the ones you get wrong till you get them right?
Yes, it does. And I, every now and then it'll throw one up later, even if after you've got it right to make sure that you, uh, have it down.
Okay, this one's new. What coordinate system is often used to display the resistive, inductive and/or capacitive resistance? Uh, com- resistance or no? Let me start over. What coordinate, coordinate system is often used to display the resistive, inductive or capacitive reactants, components of impedance? And the manhain grid, this is the, um, grid square system for locating. That's not it.
So I, I, I believe what they're talking about is a Smith chart here.
Yeah, that's what I thought it would be called.
So the Smith chart is, um, is elliptical, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Oh my God, I should quit. I should quit while I'm ahead. Well, I'm not ahead. I should just quit.
The, oh, it's ellipses organized on a rectangular coordinate. Okay, but yeah. So it's just normal X, Y grid. And then the reading that you're getting on the Smith chart is what's elliptical.
Sounds good.
So it's a trick question, basically.
Yep. Dan, you wanna take this one?
All right. So which of the following injuries can result from using high-power UHF or microwave transmitters? Uh, let's see, my popcorn won't get done properly. Let's see, uh, yeah, no, blood clots is not intense. Oh, depending on your iron content. Okay. Gestion of ozone gas. That's funny. No, it's, uh, localized heating.
Localized heating of body from RF exposure in excess of the MPE limits.
Maximum permo- maximum permissible. Maximum permo- maximum permissible exposure limit.
Um, when they started doing radar testing um, for like nuclear missiles and stuff, that's how they came up basically, I think, with the microwave because one of the guys that was standing in front of the radar array noticed a Hershey's bar in his pocket melting. And that's when they started, you know, saying, oh, we could use this stuff for cooking or whatever.
Clint, do you wanna take this one?
What might be indicated by a sudden rise in radio background noise across a large portion of the HF spectrum? Uh, temperature inversion has occurred, a solar flare has occurred. Increased trans uh, quadrille propagation is likely, long cross propagation is likely, um. Uh, B?
A solar flare has occurred, correct.
Awesome.
Corey, correct?
Uh, yeah, um, which of the following is required in order to operate in accordance with SEPT rules in foreign countries where permitted? Uh, A is you must depend slash SEPT to your call sign, B is you must bring a copy of FCC public notice, DA sixteen dash ten forty-eight, C is the US embassy must approve of your operation, um, and D is you must identify the official language of the country in which you are operating. Um, the most common sense to me would say like a dash SEPT or something like that, but that's not an option. And no way is everyone gonna bring a public notice with them. Um, and since I don't know what SEPT is and I'm guessing here, um, I'm guessing it's in a country where either they don't speak your language or you don't normally have transmit to permissions. So I'm guessing either uh, C or D, I'm gonna go with D.
FCC always wants paperwork.
Ah, good point.
I've, yeah, so. While operating in amateur station in a SEPT country, the person must have his or her, in his or her possession, a copy of this public notice DA eleven two two one, proof of US citizenship and evidence of the FCC license grant.
Now, what's SEPT stand for?
Um, does this explain it? Um, wait here. Confer- Conference of European Post- Postal and Telecommunication Countries?
So basically a country with their own um, band spec and that to know you're complying with it, you have to have all this paperwork. That way, if you are questioned by an authority there, you can present it, basically.
Yeah.
Whi- which would never happen.
It is. It is um, basically um, Europe's FCC.
Ah.
And these are the, these are the lists of countries that gu- that it governs.
Okay, cool.
But yeah, that's a good um, way to know this one is the government always wants paperwork.
But it's a little tricky too, right? Because you need more than just a copy of the FCC public notice.
That is correct. That is why this is the tricky thing is, that is actually only part of what you actually are required to have.
That's kind of why I was like, why would they want a public notice as long as you have proof and verification of your citizenship and your call sign from the FCC? And then it would be up to the authorities there to know their own regulations.
Ah, papers please, papers please.
I actually think it's exactly that reason is they don't, they are saying they probably won't know the reg- the radio regulations. So you are bringing the notice so that they can actually read what is required. Would be my guess.
Ah, that makes sense.
Yeah, from the, from the document itself, it's the, it's basically the agreement, you know, like, hey, just, just so you guys know, we have this agreement, so.
I can, I can get that one.
You wanna take this one, smoking ape?
Probably not, let's see. What is meant by the term opt amp input offset voltage? The differential input voltage needed to bring an open loop output voltage to zero? The potential between an amplifier, input terminals of the op-amp in an open loop condition? The difference between and, between the output voltage of an op-amp and the input voltage required in the immediately following stage? The output voltage of the op-amp minus its input voltage? I've never used an amp. Well, I actually have, but it was a crappy one, so uh.
Explain what an op-amp does real quick. It takes a set voltage, it's VCC, which could be five volts or whatever it's operating on. And then it's going to take in a signal and then create a differential voltage based on what that analog signal is. And then something else can read that analog voltage. So like where a signal is too small to measure, basically, uh, it's going to generate a voltage output. Some guessing, C or D?
Yeah, I would guess, I would guess D. But I usually go with the longest answer is the right one on these things.
So.
I guess, yeah, I bet you s- oh.
Ah, positive or negative?
The correct answer has the words differential and zero. Think about a scale. If the, if it is offset, you try to get the z- the scale to ju- if it is offset, you try to get the scale to show zero when it has nothing on it.
So A then?
Yep. Which of the following occurs when a satellite is using an inverting linear tris- which of the following occurs when a satellite is using uh, an inverting linear transponder? All of these choices are correct. Upper sideband on the uplink becomes lower sideband on the downlink and vice versa. Doppler shift is reduced because the uplink and the downlink shifts are in opposite directions. The si- signal position on the band is reversed.
Anyone have any guesses?
Well, satellites don't use sideband, right?
Um, they do for linear transponders. There's actually, there's actually, this was the second, this was on HRCC's second satellite series. Is there's the standard that just use FM? And then there's the linear transponders which are basically like um, the SDR where they actually do a, like a, uh, like, a kilohertz range that you can fill in slots um, in si- with single sideband.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking it is I'm thinking it's B. That th- it's the, on the uplink, it's going one direction and on the downlink, it's inverted, so everything's going in the other direction.
That makes sense to me because D, signal position in the band is reversed, doesn't seem logical, so it can't be A. So that, of all the answers, I think B sends the most logical, reasonable, whatever.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, the Doppler shift, um, because they're going in opposite directions, the Doppler shift does it.
Yeah.
Like, I'm trying to remember, cause I remember getting there, like I, I got the Gordo book and I was going through it and I'm like, just checked it off real quick and looked at the answer and it was right and it's, I can't, can't remember what it was right now. I think it was a, I think it's all of them, but, yeah, Jeff, it's up to you.
I'll do B. I think it's either B or D. I don't think Doppler shift is reduced. Nope.
Wow, oh.
It is all.
D doesn't make sense to me. I'm gonna have to read that up.
D, so what, so what it is is if you're, if the uplink is coming from, like, so you ha- it's it is on a, let's say it's, they're talking on a, a kilohertz, uh, one kilohertz section. So let's say the uplink is, you're u- you're talking um, you're talking three positions from the left on the uplink. On the downlink, you're gonna be three positions from the right. So it's, it's a mirror image in the, on the band position. Of, within that one kilohertz or whatever the section is that they're um, repeating. Dan, you wanna take this one?
Which of these digital modes does not support keyboard to keyboard operation? Um, MFSK, RIDI, PSK thirty-one or PACTOR? Uh, I believe it was PACTOR.
That is correct. Do you want an explanation or is everyone good with it?
I think it's um, the, the PACTOR is, is just the direct link between two points and everything else. It's like, as the signals get sent out and sent, you know, and received at the same time.
PACTOR is the packet protocol, which is basically the headers and fitters. It's not the it's not the actual is not the keyboard, the.
And you boys.
Sending data.
You, you boys can't wait to get on PACTOR, right?
Oh yeah, that, that's the whole reason for this.
I guess it's my turn now. What is the primary function of an external earth connection or ground rod? To reduce RF current flow between pieces of equipment? To reduce RFI to the telephones and home entertainment systems? Lightning protection or to reduce received noise? Uh, it would be C, lightning protection, I believe.
Yep. Corey? Corey, do you wanna take this one? Smoking ape, you want this one?
Yeah, I'm gonna take this one, but then I'm gonna jump off after this. This, this is really cool for you to do this, by the way. It says, what devices are commonly used as VHF and UHF parasitic suppressors at the input and output terminals of a transistor HF amplifier? I don't know. Uh, I don't know what a Butterworth filter is. Um, steel core toroids, as far as I know, toroids are ferrite or powdered iron. Uh, ferrite beads, um, that doesn't make sense to me either, but it might. I'm not a hundred percent sure what a parasitic suppressor does, or electrolytic capacitors, and I'm gonna go with D.
Hey, I'm putting the voice back and call you back. Yeah.
The ferrite beads.
There you go.
Ferrite beads, a small sphere of ferrite with a hole through it that acts as a filter to suppress high-frequency noise.
That's true. Alright, well, I'm jumping off. Thank you uh, for ha- for having me and uh, again, this is really cool.
You're welcome.
Hey, that butter, that Butterworth filter? It, it's for when you're pouring your syrup on your pancakes, hold a strainer under there.
Make sure there's no floaters, make sure no floaters make it through. Alright, well, take care.
Take care.
Alright, have a good night.
Uh.
Rectangular. Paperwork.
Yep. What is the term for the reduction in receiver sensitivity caused by a strong signal near, near the rec- near the received frequency? Quieting, squelch, gain rollback, cross modu- modulation interference and desensitization.
I'm going with D, desens.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah. Yep. And that's just the, the hint would be, you're talking about sensitivity and it's desensitization.
Yep.
Dan, you wanna take this one?
From which of the following bands is amateur radio contesting generally excluded? Well, let's see, uh, six meters, there's contests, thirty-three centimeters, there's contests, two meters, the VHF QSO parties. So I'm gonna say thirty meters.
Correct. Yeah, one one thing that I've noticed is thirty meters, sixty and sixty meters have a lot of regulations.
Yeah, they're the all.
Doubt.
So if there's, if you don't know of anything else and it's wanting something that's uni- unique, one of the unique bands, pick one of them.
Yeah, call Poto on a thirty meters, you hear how many people scream at you for it.
And that one.
All of the above.
Clint, do you wanna take this one?
How does a narrow-band roofing filter affect receiver performance? It improves intelligibility by using low-Q circuitry to reduce ringing. It improves dynamic range by attenuating signals near the receive frequency. It improves sensitivity by reducing front-end noise. Or all of these are correct. Narrow-band roofing filter. I'm gonna guess maybe B, but I'm not positive about that.
That's what I was leaning to as well. And it is correct.
It roofs off the uh, the frequency.
Yep.
It's like the roof, like it, it puts a top on it. So, you know, that's what they say by roofing, it puts an absolute top on it.
Yep. Okay. Which of the following describes authorization or lic- license requirements when operating an amateur station aboard a US-registered vessel in international waters? And I believe this has been on the technicians and the general test.
It, it, well, yeah, it's a slightly different word in a different way, but it is.
Yeah, so it's US-regulated, so that means it's any FCC issued amateur license. Dan, you wanna take this one?
Uh, what is that ten dollar worth? Uh, what is that ten dollar word?
Susceptance.
Um, magnetic impedance of a circuit, measure of efficiency of a transformer? Imaginary part of admittance. It's all imaginary. It's always written with script. Uh, the ratio of magnetic field to electric field. It's a sentence. It's not the efficiency, I know that. Imaginary, that's, that's definitely funny there. Uh, I'm gonna say D. No.
Nope.
Wow.
The one that we thought was completely imaginary.
Ooh, it's imaginary. It doesn't really exist. Alright, this is really cool. Jeff, thanks for doing this, man. I'll get back to you. I gotta get out of here.
Yep.
Get the uh, the kids off the bed here, so.
We're at a hour, so we'll, I think this will be our last one. Um, I'll probably try to do another one in the middle of the week, so one in the weekend and one in the middle of the week, just to continue to go through these, so.
And Jeff, if you do any on the other license levels, let me know, because that'd be fun. I'm actually doing the ham study on my other screen for tech in general right now.
Okay, um, why don't, I probably won't do the other ones because I've already taken the test, but why don't you um? Pick a time and you can, why don't you uh lead one? You can lead one.
That'd be interesting.
For uh, one of the other levels, so.
Yeah, why don't you, you lead one and we'll see if we can still answer the tech questions.
If I could get somebody that's already taken the tech quiz though, to do it at the same time with us, that way if people have questions or something like that? Because there's likely to be a lot of new hams, I would imagine, if we're.
Yeah, right.
We could, yeah, we can sit in. I'm just thinking of having someone sort of take the lead that's the, is more focused on. Learning it versus um, someone who's already taken it, so. But sounds good. Everyone have a good night and I will send out a message when I pick another time, the next time for doing it, so. Take care.
Awesome. That's really.
Very cool. Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Have a good night, guys.